Let's call to order the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting of October 2nd. Couple minutes past six. Let's start with the minutes of last meeting, September 6th. About a motion, a second, and then we'll have any discussion about it.
I make a motion to accept the need for a minute.
Is there a second on that motion?
A second wasn't here.
That's all right.
Okay, go.
Okay, any, anything about the minutes? Questions concerning, comments? Looks like Dan's looking at them. Do you have a few seconds for the speed reader? Oh, no, all right, okay. Well, great. So, all those in favor, please raise your hand and keep it up. That's Todd, Dan, myself, and Lindsay. Okay. Moving on to announcements, I just have one, which is that last meeting, we had Jonathan Weber of Local Motion presenting some ideas about about bike racks in Brattleboro.
Bike standards, bike parking standards.
Bike parking, that's the better, more general term. And, yeah, some ideas around that. And we're gonna probably see him again, the plan is in November. I think maybe last meeting, I said, we'll see you next month, but anyway, delayed one month. Are there any other announcements? Yep, Sue.
I have a couple. First, we just were notified that we were able to renew our village center designation. That is a designation that kind of, some of the benefits are the ability to get tax credits. And so this is in West Brattleboro Village. It's kind of, it's not as big as the zoning district, it's a smaller area. The state has a couple of designation programs. And they're pretty specific about it being like the center of commercial and civic buildings in a place, so we couldn't extend it too far out, but that's good. And then it also presents the opportunity to get the neighborhood development area designation to it, which that was submitted today. Steve worked on both of those, so hopefully we'll have good news about the NDA. And then the second is, we received notice from the Marlborough, Vermont Planning Commission. They're warning a public hearing on October 10th at 6 o'clock. They didn't give the Zoom link, but you can be in person at the Marlborough Town Office, and it's a public hearing on amendments to their zoning regulations. They're amending their off-road vehicular ways, actually, that's a new section. They're creating a wildlife habitat overlay district. They are amending the definition of a structure to delete that a parking space is a structure. And they are revising their surface water buffer overlay standards. So, I can scan this if you all want to take a look at it, but they're required to give notice to a budding town. So, it's October 10th at 6 o'clock.
Anything else from commissioners or staff for announcements? No?
I guess, well, just one other thing, sorry. We do have an opening on the planning commission. I think we might have a guest here who has actually submitted for a position on the planning commission.
Oh, okay.
But the select board is accepting people who are interested.
Okay, fantastic.
We should have an appointment soon.
Okay, I wondered who the member of the public on the Zoom was. And I will say, since there is a member of the public here, and just for everybody listening at home too, that although we have public comments scheduled at the end of the meeting, feel free to raise your hand and you can chime in for during agenda items if it's germane to that agenda item. But if not, if you just have other comments, there's the public comment period at the end, which we, I think, have flexibility about moving towards the front or around if people have time constraints. But did that person just leave?
No, I realize.
Oh, okay, but you shifted.
No, BCTB prefers to have it just.
Forward.
I just made it so that those would be yours on.
Okay. So, moving on to an agenda item about parking standards and parking reform. I think the, the goal of this is to provide some more context and a little broader conversation to be of the, to add to our knowledge and discussion about the bicycle parking.
Now, this is vehicular.
No, I know, that's it, to add to that and broaden it. So that way we're moving forward in these coming months and just talking about parking in general.
You should because you're in the agenda.
And what if we have for this time allocation one?
25 minutes.
Okay, yeah, I think that's totally fine.
All right, is everyone seeing this? Todd, Dan?
Yeah.
Great, okay. Right, so we mostly didn't address the topic of our parking requirements while we did the LUR amendments over the past year. So, it was refreshing to have some discussion of parking minimums, albeit in a different mode in the last meeting, and I think the intent was to have a just sort of conversation starter on the topic and what it is. So, a little bit of background on what we have now. I'm sure all of the commissioners are aware, but for the benefit of the public, we'll start with this. We have, like almost every community in the U.S. and even just the world more broadly at this point, minimum parking requirements for every district in town except for the urban center. And we also do have a maximum parking requirement everywhere, where 200% of the minimum parking requirement is the maximum. There are certain exceptions to both. But we also have design standards and dimensional standards for parking that does get created. And we have a few sort of relief valves.
Do you think, Dan, handy for the interrupt?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, we just can't hear terribly well. Could the mic be pointed towards Steve or, or at least I can?
Yeah, Sue.
For sure. It's, yeah.
Try to get closer to the mic and.
He put his thumbs up, so I think that's better.
Okay. So, to recap briefly, we have, we have minimum parking requirements, except not in the downtown. That's been the case for about eight years now, I believe, that we haven't.
Been about 20 years.
Predated, okay. So, yeah, for about 20 years, we haven't had parking minimums in the downtown. But we do have them elsewhere, and we also have parking maximums. And for that parking that does get built, we have some design standards and dimensional standards for that, as well as a few ways to receive relief from those requirements. Communities in the U.S. at this point, all of them, have one of these riveting tables. This one is ours. And it pertains to, if you're going to do development in the town of Brattleboro, say for the downtown, you need to provide parking in accordance with the most appropriate ratio from this table. We do have ways to avoid building out to the full ratio, but typically it requires the applicant to be aware of that fact and successfully appeal for that type of relief, which is not exceedingly common, but it does exist in our regulations. We also have maximums set to double our minimums. And these can also be granted relief if, for some reason, the applicant wants to exceed that particular ratio. Some of our relief options are essentially not mandatory, but being, being within a certain distance of a town-owned parking facility makes you eligible for a reduced ratio, as well as submitting a professionally-prepared study. But of course, these things do represent a certain amount of regulatory friction that might otherwise be, without that sort of system in place, we may see different activities from potential applicants for development. So, why might we want to reconsider that policy? It's increasingly popular to do so in a lot of American cities and also abroad. But it might seem sort of like just the natural thing that everyone does, and in many ways, that did become the case over the 20th century. But it's, it's not without its potential issues, and I think it would be a productive conversation to have to consider the balance of whether the potential benefits of that particular land use policy are actually worth the trade-offs that come with it. So, within our Section 313, we require that a parking stall be a minimum of nine feet by 18 feet, which is 162 square feet. And for some commercial and office uses, the most intense ratio that we have is a 1 to 150 square feet per floor area, which means that we're actually requiring more space for the parking stall than we are, we are requiring more, slightly more space for the just parking stall alone, not counting the other things like drive aisles and islands in the parking lot and other required elements, than the actual building itself takes up. And that's even the case when it's a single floor, but it becomes increasingly off, it, it becomes increasingly imbalanced in the direction of parking as additional floors are included. So, this on the right-hand side is not Brattleboro, but this is a, just an infographic about how quickly the space on a small urban lot can become strictly parking when trying to meet the minimum parking requirements with surface parking alone. So there's certainly an opportunity cost to what you can do with a site when parking is required. There are certain ways to try to structurally mitigate that space conflict, and some of them include trying to build up or down with parking, but they oftentimes do still take up quite a bit of the conceptual space that you could otherwise be putting housing in. And they're quite, quite expensive compared to not having to build a structure of that type. But when that particular outcome does happen, it's very poor for walkability and oftentimes requires a floor plate that's so large that almost none of our zoning districts would actually allow for it. So in that scenario, it would essentially be impossible to pencil unless you could use surface parking to meet your requirement, and that is also not an excellent situation for walkability, which I believe is a stated goal in all of our developed districts' policy statements, as well as the town plan. So, what I mean here in the slide notes by mode fringe is that if anyone's recently been around a sunbelt city or perhaps somewhere that's growing fast and might see some of these pedestal buildings, there's often a entryway for cars that fronts directly on the street, and you'll have a lot of in-and-out traffic directly across a way that pedestrians are intended to walk. And so that area of potential mode conflict is particularly dangerous for people crossing. It also, as we can see here in the picture, produces extremely coarse-grained development, not the type of small permeable blocks that we often see, like we have downtown. And we've already touched on the, the size of those buildings being primitive here. But as another way to represent how quick the spatial concerns with this particular type of policy can stack up, here's an example from a small town in Idaho where the existing downtown fabric looks like this. But to be able to, if it were to be reconstructed today, it would require this much parking to meet the minimums. So it's easy to see how quickly space can be wasted for this particular policy goal and how much it is directly at the cost of some of our other stated policy goals like compact urban growth and walkability. So, that was hypothetical, but here's an actual example of an urban-style infill building in that town that was built to meet the street and other good things like that. But the full picture is that this much space on that lot was required just to meet the parking standard. And I don't think that would be particularly different than the way that our code would treat it in several of our districts. Perhaps more crucially to people who are renting or people who are wanting to build and have it pencil out, parking is not something that comes at no cost. In fact, it oftentimes comes at extremely high cost, particularly when it's building up or down. The median American city was found to have, I think, $25,000 per spot when it came to suburban and parkin'. And Northeast cities were substantially higher than that, so it stands to reason that we would probably be in the, in the $30,000 range, perhaps. But it's not just the developers that would feel that cost. Studies have been done that show that even when the required parking is not provided for free and can be opted out of by tenants, it had not been found that that prevented costs to the rent from being passed on to tenants, as it still needed to be spread out across the units in a building to be able to pencil. So, the nationwide average in this particular study was found to be $225 per month in rent that was passed on. But as we can see, Boston and New York City are to the right of that particular curve, so it may well be higher in Vermont than that nationwide average. Parking as a land use is also not something that pays its own way, so to speak. And I won't spend a ton of time on this, but it's probably worth considering that when we have a policy that, in essence, mandates a floor of the amount of parking that we're going to have supplied, we're essentially locking up a substantial amount of our overall land, which is fairly constrained in this town, to perhaps the least budget-friendly land use that almost never actually recoups enough value to pay for the services that it consumes. So, the photos here are just an example from a county in Illinois showing the extremely paltry sum that was actually able to be recouped by parking as compared to the productive uses of buildings that would fill up a site. And I will acknowledge that I have not actually substantiated whether or not this is a true claim, but it's provocative nonetheless, a comparison of a single building in, in a city with surface lots in terms of how much that they recoup in property taxes. But I think we often don't recognize just how much oversupply we actually do have because of how sort of invisible parking can become, because of how familiar it is as an aspect of our everyday life. So I've included a few images to try to reveal that ubiquitousness. So, you know, in certain places that are particularly egregious, more than 50% of their downtown area is just parking, like here in Kansas City and Little Rock, Arkansas. And this sort of thing is a direct result of that policy choice. It's not something that just happened, and it's not something that filled in empty spaces. It definitely, nearly always, of course, does happen in greenfield development that way now, but oftentimes has a seriously negative impact on existing urban settlement. So, some particularly shocking examples are Tulsa, Oklahoma here, this area of Kansas City, Denver, Colorado. And less shocking, but more relevant here in Brattleboro, the difference between 1942 and 2020, which, when accounting for the amount of actual off-street surface parking that we have, a quarter of all of our downtown area is actually covered by surface parking, which is equivalent roughly to a sunbelt city like Dallas. And I don't know about y'all, but that definitely wasn't something I saw coming. And that's, you know, downtown is perhaps the worst example to use because we haven't been requiring people to actually make off-street parking with their development for 20 years. But it does go to show that the sky won't fall if, if parking isn't required because land use kind of changes at a glacial pace. But in other areas of town, like for example, just between three commercial properties on Putney Road, between Hannaford's and Aldi, there are roughly 1,300 parking spots alone in that area, which is more than enough for a tenth of the town to go shopping at the same time. But critically, that never does happen.
And didn't you say 11 acres?
Yes, 11, 11 acres of pavement area, and that's not including drive aisles or access. So that would also be, I believe, about an eighth of downtown, so. The policy alternatives that we might want to consider would be simply not requiring that parking be provided and allow it to be determined by the developer, developer or builder themselves. And there are a number of concerns that are reasonable and good faith that I think come up a lot about this particular thing, which is, has anyone done this? Is this a, is this something that actually works? Where will I park? Can this happen when it snows? Things like that. So, there are quite a number of cold-weather cities who actually have already abolished their parking minimums, including these ones here. Regrettably, we can't be the first in Vermont to do it anymore if we were to choose to do that. But it's increasingly popular, and even the American Planning Association is recently advocating quite strongly for it, so it's not just a strong-town's-wonk idea anymore. Three of those particular cities where, for, have had enough time pass since they changed their policy that they can actually see the impacts of that decision. And in all cases, it led to a greater amount of housing being able to happen, and yet, in every case, at least two-thirds of the housing still chose to build parking despite no longer being required to. So, the actual change in what developers will choose to do when not bound by that floor set by a parking minimum is not merely as extreme as perhaps some people might be worried would happen. But nonetheless, there's been a significant amount of new housing that wouldn't have been possible in those places previously. And I think if we thought about it here, we could probably come up with a substantial amount of development that's happened in the last two decades downtown, but wouldn't have been allowed to previously. And even in some places that haven't fully abolished them, there are some pretty compelling reasons to think that it wouldn't be the end of the world to simply not set that floor of minimum parking anymore. Like in Seaport in Boston, a substantial amount of infill and in a sort of test-case neighborhood of Portland, Oregon, that removed its parking minimums a few decades ago, similarly to Brattleboro. The actual mode share has responded to that. So, it seems that people will make a choice when, when given that choice. So there are a few places that this could go, which would be, depending on how much the commission has an appetite for rather sweeping change, it, it wouldn't be a particularly large change in terms of how much, how many staff hours and how much language would have to change to simply remove minimums and perhaps add the maximums or leave in maximums and potentially slide them down to where our current minimums are. Or in the meantime, ways that the negative impacts of parking minimums could be mitigated to an extent would be allowing bike parking or public transit to count for a one-to-one share or perhaps an A-share of the parking minimum, should those minimums remain. And then there are some other sort of in-tandem policies that are commonly recommended when considering anything from the complete removal of parking minimums to even just expanding the amount of our area around downtown that doesn't have them or anything, any reduction in the requirement of parking. Creating a parking benefit district or a permit pass for local residents sort of structure is often recommended as a way to build constituencies so that localized concerns about lack of parking don't create tension or pushback against the potential change. And there are a few things like the amount that we charge for on-street parking or off-street public parking, as well as our winter parking ban, that are often accurately pointed to as barriers to, or potential challenges to actually changing our parking requirements and our land use. And looking into how those might be possibly changed to support that land use change, should it be pursued, would probably be a good idea as well. I think that's. So, looks like we have as much as 10 minutes for discussion.
Yeah. Well, thank you for putting that together and something that. The commissioners have, let's open it up for questions or any preferences or direction that you guys are thinking?
I'd have a comment, which is, thanks, because that's pretty counterintuitive what I would assume about the whole thing, so your comparisons and stuff were, were great, so. So anyways, just thanks for that, Hassan.
You suggested a few options for ways to move forward. Do you have recommended, like, what would you do if you were in charge?
I would certainly take the more wholesale approach of removing the minimums altogether. I don't think that it really does all that much to just reduce them. And I know we have done quite a lot to reduce them in Brattleboro, which is worth commending. But yeah, just simply not having them on the books would be probably the most substantial land use change that we could do for not just the social, economic, and spatial change, but I didn't really mention the runoff improvements that we would see from less hardscape. So I think that that would certainly be a strongly recommended choice. But there are plenty of ways that biking, walking, and taking the bus and train, what have you, could also be promoted to really bring that together.
Yeah, I think this comes at a good time because, you know, we certainly, not just us at the planning commission, but, you know, the town and the state and the region are talking about the housing crisis and how it's so expensive and where's it going to go? And if more land is freed up through any number of ways, but this could be one of them, then it could be part of what's needed to help make that more likely to happen. And like you said, our town plan and the state statutes and everything promote compact development. Having unnecessary parking is not in line with that, in my mind. And then the stormwater too, with the flooding that we just had and the rain and, you know, trying to move things in that direction of dealing with stormwater better. Seems like unnecessary asphalt and impervious surfaces, just superfluous and not wise to have. I have a few questions I wrote down. Your examples were cities. Did you come across some that were like towns our size?
Yes.
And Burlington is actually not too far off in regard to some of those larger cities.
Yeah, so off the top of my head, and I'm now realizing that that was the slide I was meaning to have in there, because I knew that was going to come up. But there is, yeah, there are a number, and I think it's probably far more than the last time I even checked. But there are at least a few steamingly early adopters in the Detroit area that are both cold-weathered places and similar or smaller in size than we are. I have never myself been to Michigan, so I don't recall what they're called. But there is a great resource on Pardon Reform Network.org that will actually show us the answer to this question.
And probably all of the larger, or the cities that you gave examples of have year-round, even in the winter, on-street parking. And so part of the reason I ask about a town our size is because it seems like in rural counties, the on-street year-round, even in the winter, on-street parking seems less likely.
So I think.
So some of those towns also don't allow that.
I think Montpelier allows on-street winter. They do the odd even thing is what I had looked at.
Because we can recommend things on the planning commission, but we have no control over the on-street parking. So if we were to change things in the way that plenty of examples successfully have, but all of them have the on-street year-round parking, then that's a difference that we have with them. Not to say it wouldn't still work, but it'd be nice to find, you know, as identical of an example to us.
Yeah, so we have Londonburg, Nova Scotia, Dover, New Hampshire, Ste Brook, New Hampshire, Burlington, Hudson, New York, not even going to attempt that.
Kennedy.
Thank you. Portsmouth, Ohio, I think that one's new since the last time I checked. A few different southern places. I want to point out that Branson, the home of Dolly Parton's Stampede, somehow doesn't have parking minimums. And then we have E-course, A-course, I'm not sure. If we have any Michiganders in the house, let me know. And River Rouge, as well as a few others in the Midwest.
Okay, so some of those are our size, close enough?
I know, Fast Drop, Texas, is, I believe, 10,000. Banderas, I believe, is maybe 2 to 7,000.
And then can either of you or anyone else recall in recent years, or recent 10 years, let's just say, developers wanting less than the minimum? And outwardly saying that? Either at DRB meetings or at the staff?
So we had conversations with a developer. I think they may have done conceptual review with the DRB for a new housing development. I don't know if they came in wanting, it was, they were just having trouble fitting their requirements. So then they started exploring, you know, ways in which they could reduce.
In a less official capacity, whenever just being asked questions, whether it's a phone call or a walk-in, I've certainly had a number of situations where folks who are interested in potentially building housing or even commercial properties are trying to figure out if something might pencil or if it might be plausible, or whether they'd even be interested. And in many cases, if we sort of ask them, is this X-whize-y thing that we have in our regulations, is that something that's a barrier? Or is that not? In many cases, we've found that they've been, there are such small margins to whether something can actually pencil here in many types of development, that that can be a poison pill.
Right.
If we got rid of the minimums, would we still be able to keep maximums? Okay.
Absolutely. I think that's rather common for the communities that do do it. Although certainly, it can be argued that if it's an arbitrary distortion of the market to move it in one direction, then what business do we have putting a ceiling on it? But I'm certainly more amenable to the idea that, as we saw, there can certainly be market failures that destroy your whole town. So maybe it's worth having a break that we can step on. Although I don't think it's particularly likely to be a worry in 2023 here.
I think Dan had his.
Oh, yeah, Dan, your hands down, but do you have?
Yep, yeah, I had a question about on-street parking. Is it required to have a curb cut and a sidewalk where you have on-street parking? Or the curb cut is for off-street, but, you know, is it required, first of all, to have the sidewalk in place? Because we have quite a few smaller streets that don't have sidewalks in the first place. And then the question would be, where does that land come from? You know, it would have to be, but I don't know if it's required in order to have on-street parking.
I don't know that it's required. I'm not going to have a great answer for this because I'm just trying to, you know, quickly run through streets and is there on-street parking or not? I don't think there's a requirement to have a sidewalk. I think, you know, we do have a lot of streets in Brattleboro that are pretty narrow. So, yeah, that could get challenged. But, I mean, they're parking in the public right-of-way or the private right-of-way if it's a private road.
Yeah, I'm just curious if it's, and then if you get to off-street parking, obviously it is required to do a curb cut if there's already a sidewalk. I guess this is a DPW question, but do we see that happening more or less than it used to? Like requests for curb cuts or anything like that to create off-street parking? You know what I mean, to cut into the sidewalk?
I mean, it's usually coming with development, so I wouldn't say it's more or less. It's just kind of, we don't, we don't allow a lot, we don't allow a lot of extra curb cuts. So it's really only if there's like a new development going in that we're getting those. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering if there's been, you know, at some point there, there was a need for curb cuts in someplace, you know, where you had sidewalks already. I didn't know if DPW has sort of numbers on how often they do that or anything like that.
I'm sure they could run numbers, but I don't think they're very high.
Yeah.
The only thing I would say about on-street parking, so if you think about, you know, as Steve mentioned, you know, most people are going to, most developers are going to want to provide some, some parking on-site to meet the needs of their, whatever is going in housing or the business. I think one thing to be aware of is if it is all pushed to on-street, there can be conflicts there. And so, you know, is it conflicting with bike lanes? Is it, you know, conflicting with, you know, any other right-of-way uses or the ability to park near where you're at? So if the planning commission wants to do something, I think this should be a larger conversation, and there should be a little bit more outreach and kind of feedback from the community. Just so that if you're choosing between options and looking at, you know, different letters that you can pull, we've done that outreach.
Right, because, you know, presumably probably decades ago, when the big sweeping of throughout the country of parking minimums in zoning probably took place, it probably was viewed as to appease the public and provide, you know, benefits to people and to not have conflicts.
Yeah, I mean, in some neighborhoods, it's a matter of orderly development. I mean, some of the complaints we've had in the past are, okay, all of a sudden it's winter, now they're parking all over the lawn and lights shining in every direction. So we've had, you know, that's, those kind of complaints. And then even just the recent experience with the bike lanes on Western Ave, all of a sudden people don't have parking in front of their property. So it's just a conversation that I think before a planning commission makes any recommendation is we should do it all.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we'd have.
Presentation, feedback.
Right. And then whichever way it goes, I think the sort of comparison of the values, you know, or the benefits versus the trade-offs, and hopefully that is convincing enough to enough. Or, you know, hopefully that lands on the side of most people's preferences.
Or even before doing that, understanding what we actually think we might want to pursue.
Yeah.
So that we're only presenting that which is likely to be recommended, so, yeah.
Exactly.
And Steve and Sue, with your possible ways forward slide, with as far as removing minimums, right now we have done that already. You said for 20 years in the urban center. Would you think that we would, we could, if we were to remove them elsewhere, it would be for just the whole rest of the town? Or certain other districts, or that's just totally up for us to decide? Yeah.
Ultimately, yes, it's always.
Right, yeah.
Through there. But, yeah, I think if I was being asked which one of those would be the best course of action with the same kind of logic as the previous question, I don't particularly think that this, that the policy of parking minimums makes any sense as a regulation, at least in terms of, I mean, well, just point-blank, but particularly in terms of, does it get the goods it intends to? And are those potential gains worth the trade-offs? I don't think that that really depends on the type of bill form context that you're in. I think just like with floor-area ratio that we did away with, it's just a coarse and unrealistic policy design. But I think particularly, it probably is the best to get rid of in the urban center like we did if you only have the political will to get that. But the more that we cannot subject to those particular sort of spatial logics, I think would be the better.
The commissioners want to express their preference on this so we know how to move forward and can give staff and ourselves some direction? I don't know if it needs to be a formal motion that we all vote on, but, I mean, we can see if we need to. Yeah, thanks, Dan.
Well, it's just another numbers question, but you mentioned Putney Road and the acreage and number of spots. I'm not sure if we'd be able to have an idea of a ratio between on-street and off-street parking in total, but I'm curious, what is a good balance? Or what is a, what is the ideal, you know, for, given the snow ban and so forth, what's the ideal balance of off-street versus on-street in Brattleboro? I mean, just, you know, granted the situation on Putney Road, but is that something we have a sense of? And where we would want to, you know, is there a direction to go in on that ratio? I don't even know if it's relevant really, but since you mentioned Putney Road, I think that's something else to be thinking about, like big parking lots. Is that an answerable question? I don't even know.
And if, you know, through your research, I do not know what a good, you know, if there's an ideal balance.
I mean, I can certainly take a look. I've been digitizing the results of our 2018 parking study downtown and taking a very unscientific count of what I can see from the aerial photos elsewhere in town, which is how I ended up with those counts of, say, 630 spaces at Hannaford and whatnot. But, yeah, we can also, of course, see when there's spaces on the street. And I believe we have a full count of those, at least formal town-owned spaces in the ordinance. So it would be, it would be possible to try to see at least what exists now. And we have a sense of, at least in 2018 when we studied it, how well were they being used comparatively? So if those sort of questions are of interest to guiding our policy moving forward, I think that's something we could definitely try getting some more info for.
I think your question, though, is a bit tricky, though. You know, downtown works because we do have the on-street, but we also have, you know, municipal lots. So I don't, yeah, I mean, we could look at that ratio, I guess, but, yeah.
Yeah.
We might have to play around with that a little bit.
Yeah, worth considering that, like Putney Road and other places that are state-maintained are probably not going to have any on-street.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do it in different parts of town, I guess. I'm just kind of curious, like, if you had an ideal situation, would you get rid of all off-street parking or all on-street parking or have a balance? You know what I mean? Would there be a, is there an ideal situation? It's, let's just say for downtown, for the, you know, denser areas, you know, would you want to get most parking off of the street or not? You know, because then that's your question of the lot sizes being used up by parking. You're basically pushing it to the on-street parking.
It's one of the challenges, right? Like, so how are you going to organize the right-of-way? Are you going to have wider sidewalks and bike lanes and, you know, green planting strips? Or is it going to be there for parking? So I think it's an interesting question that you ask.
But I think, I think some really low-hanging fruit is that we could potentially be not mandating unused and unnecessary and superfluous, all three words mean the same thing, just stringing words together. But superfluous paved parking spaces. Because then that wouldn't push cars anywhere because they wouldn't be using those spaces.
Right.
Yeah.
Or they hadn't been.
I don't believe it came up in my presentation, but excessive parking has actually been shown to have an effective inducing demand for driving and additional, you know, vehicle miles traveled, et cetera. So it's not just adding lanes to the freeway as a. Uh, so it's, it's not just adding lanes to the freeway as we're probably all familiar with, um. Causing more driving and, you know, a endless cycle of congestion that chases that. Building excessive parking tends to create more, uh, seeking out parking as well. Uh, and certainly, while probably not politically realistic, it is in theory the, the. Something that can be considered, and we're talking about reorganizing the public realm, that, um. It's not just a one-for-one, do we want the cars off the street or do we want them on the street? Uh, certainly if. If pricing for demand, uh, and, and if the policy choices were so, uh. That folks still wanted to see, uh, things be prioritized for biking and walking. The answer could probably be that. Uh. You could really could marginalize space for cars, uh, and people would find a place to, to put it if, if they could. If the market would justify it. Um, but certainly making, not just, uh, reflexively, uh, making it as easy as possible to, to park wherever we want. Uh, which has never been the norm until a pretty small period of time. Uh, those are choices that could be made, uh, in theory. Maybe they're not likely to be popular ones though, but. It, it's worth not taking off the table, uh, just reflexively, I would, I would think.
I have a question, even though I'm trying to wrap this up, this agenda item. Um, the downtown parking study. That's what it's called, right? Downtown, it pretty much is, um, has the same boundaries as the urban center district. More or less, or is it broad? Okay.
Yeah.
So it doesn't tell us much beyond where we've already eliminated parking minimums.
Correct.
But it is the densest area and it found that for the most part, there's enough parking there. There's little periods of time, like in southern, in, in, in one or two of like the eleven zones that it's faced where, where it's, it's full, but then within a block. There's, there's enough parking. So people are, you know, able and willing to walk just a little distance. Um, our downtown even has enough or more than enough, according to that study, so. Um, the member of the public has their hand up. I don't know how to say your name.
It's John Kolor, thanks. Um. So how are, how is tourist parking included in this analysis for an area like downtown? And, and the reason I ask the question is because it appears as we talk about this, we're talking about sort of a steady state of. Let's call it town residents, you know, who need to, to use these areas and are affected by this, but tourist parking is a bit of a. Uh, odd duck, right? I mean, it, it's a different factor that has to be considered.
Right, yeah, I mean, I suppose there's surge times.
Yeah, so when they did the parking study, they actually did parking counts to kind of get a sense and they did it, um, weekday. Uh, I think two weekdays and two weekends. Um, so it was taking, it was a June, the, the parking study was done in the beginning of June, so. You know, it wasn't necessarily fall foliage, but it, it was, you know, kind of a busy summer weekend, uh, that they were doing the counting on. So. They were looking at the demand, um, by doing actual parking counts.
So, I mean, we could debate whether it's June was the best weekend, but it was included in some form or fashion.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and there's, um, I, I can make the links available. There's a. Pretty interesting thing that Strong Towns has done for a number of years now, just taking pictures of Black Friday parking lots. Uh, just showing how, you know, oftentimes gigantic retail parking lots that are built out to the anticipated biggest possible day. Uh, don't fill up even maybe halfway, uh, for those things. And so, uh, for the other three hundred and sixty-four days of the year. Uh, they're just a whole lot of wasted space. Uh, but even on that one boom day, uh, they're not getting. The kind of peak demand that we're expecting them to. And I know that's different than on-street parking in a downtown, but. We, we seem to make do.
My sentiment is definitely that this is worth. Pursuing in some fashion. Um, I'm particularly thinking of infill cases where. Those charts you showed of the ratio of parking to building would be particularly constrained by the size of an infill lot. And that could potentially stop the possibility of putting in like, I don't know, maybe a tiny apartment building or something like that, so. I, I would be interested in whatever the next steps are.
Yeah, same for me. And I'm, I find the, um, most compelling and what I can remember from the slide about recommendations is to, um, remove the minimums. But leave the maximums, at least for now, because it seems like developers, you know, really for the most part are gonna know better than us. What makes their project feasible? Or, you know, what are excessive costs? And, um, but by having a maximum, we're protecting some public. Some public goods, you know, like stormwater and. You know, the, the, the general built, built, um, texture of the landscape and, and promoting certain things like housing.
I guess now, since those maximums are currently in base part on the minimums, that we would need. To not have it be a percentage of whatever the minimum was, not two hundred percent of the minimum, but an actual suggested number. It would be my inclination, I don't know about other people, but to make that number slightly less than two hundred percent.
Yeah, I, I think it would be a very quick. Change, uh, in terms of the effort required from, from, uh, staff or whoever is editing the, the document. To simply change the existing minimums into what would be the maximums. Uh, or if there was appetite to try to do a longer study of what would it make sense to have as the maximum? And then set that as the maximum and, and do away with the, the table that we have, uh, perhaps. The, the first scenario would be quite easy. Staff time speaking, um, but maybe there are, uh, things we haven't thought ever considered in terms of, maybe that's still too much.
And of course, even something simple like that would still go through and maybe not immediately, cause we just did a land use regs amendment, but the next time we do one, it would go through that public process, but. Like you said, maybe we should. Schedule some sort of info, community outreach meeting or.
I think that we can, you know, definitely look at it and shape it, you know, if we're doing something in tandem with, you know, bicycle parking standards and. Parking reform.
Yeah.
You know, it's. I don't like to leave the land use regulations stuck in stone forever, so, you know, if we've got a little chunk, it's not a major revision, like just a, could be like, you know.
Okay, um, Taj and Dan, do you, well, what's, what are your feelings? About moving forward? Oh, you're muted, Taj.
Well, I, I, um, had skimmed material before and this got me a lot more curious to, um. To, to look at, at what's out there for. And I gotta say, I. Based on that, makes a lot of sense to me to, uh, to, to just at a maximum and, and to perhaps get rid of a minimums. I, I'm not. Some kind of, and wait, I, I think the market can kind of take care of that itself, but, I mean, we all look at market when we open businesses and move. And I think that, that, uh, sellers and builders are gonna pay attention to that. So anyways, I would support. As what, if what we have now to get rid of minimums and just figure out the right maximum, which I have no clue, you know?
Dan?
That's my thoughts.
You know, I, I think I'd need to see, uh, I, I guess I'm, uh. You know, I, I think that's a good inclina- inclination, but I think I'd need to see, uh. Some different scenarios played out, like if that were the case, and modifying the minimums might be another way to go. I don't know. Uh, but because you could, as Sue mentioned, I mean, you could be setting up a situation where you. Even if it's just during certain, you know. Uh, seasons, let's say, you could be setting up a. You know, not a great situation, uh, for, for parking too. So, you know, I, I guess. I, I, I see the logic for, you know, just getting rid of the minimums, but, um. I'd, I'd be curious if there's some sort of way to tweak it more than. Get rid of it entirely, but I don't know what those scenarios would look like. I know that's more work as well, so I, I appreciate that that would be more, uh. Uh, intensive to figure it out, but. That's my thought.
Okay, hearing all that, and we have two commissioners absent, but I hear enough, enough interest that I think we can all expect to see it. Um, and then evolved in different form, um, but along the path generally that, that we've been saying at a future meeting. Okay, um, moving on a bit late here, um, to the agenda item about charter revision. Um, I included a memo in the E folder and, um, a copy of the charter is there as well. Uh, in which I said something along the lines of the Charter Revision Commission. I don't know if you all know much about that, but there, um. There's a once every fifteen-year, um, um, binding necessity in our current charter to form that commission to review and potentially recommend. Revisions to the charter. And the charter is like the town's, the town's governing, um, document that spells out the powers and how, how the government works. And, um, one thing they wanna do is have in their November meeting, um, uh, have it be focused on recommendations from the towns' boards, committees, commissions. And, you know, they're receptive to anybody participating as individuals or other groups at other times, but, um, they want that meeting to be for that reason. So if we come to some. Um, I guess majority decision on, on any recommendation that we have. Then, um, I or someone else, if they want to, can, um, participate at that meeting in November. To, to express that to them. So in the memo, I just, for, for ease, um. I, uh, pulled out excerpts of parts of the charter that I felt were relevant to the Planning Commission in some way, and then. Um, there's a little bit from the state statute to also show what statute, um. That's already written allows to be possible. And, and just so we all know, when a charter, um, is, is changed or amended, um, even if it's approved. By whichever, um, way that it gets approved, the select board or the townspeople or representative town meeting. It still needs to be approved by the Vermont Legislature and then it becomes statute. It's just in a different chapter of statute, so. It would, it would supersede anything that's in statute if it's. More specific than that or, yeah. Um, so I'll run through quickly the things and, and I just put these here not necessarily to be like, hey, I think, you know. If, to the extent that any of these look like proposals or my preferences, they're not, they're just all discussion starters. One of them is that, um, one of the purposes, the six purposes of the charter is to promote compliance of the town plan. Another is that, um, people on, um, mem- people holding positions on boards, committees and commissions are limited to serving nine years in a row. Or two terms, whichever one's longer, and then they have to take a break for at least a year. There's also, there's a, a section where there's three broad delineated powers of the voters of the town. Right, and we have about ten thousand of those in town. And, um, one is that by petition. Which needs ten percent of the voters of the town, so you'd have a thousand, about a thousand people's signatures on a petition. Then the voters can put to, can, can have the power that the select board has as far as writing. Um, making changes and revisions to the town plan, zoning bylaws and subdivision rights. Another part is that, um. Couple meetings ago, someone felt, a few meetings ago, someone felt that July first was, um, not the best time of year. For, for our organizational meeting and for members to switch over. And, um, there was a little relevancy here where. For all boards and committees and commissions in town, um, terms begin on July first. Oh, wait. Oh, yeah, that is for all of the boards, commissions and committees. And then also in that section, there's a description of the Development Review Board, their roles and responsibilities, and same for the Planning Commission. And currently, the way we have it is that the, well, Vermont statute allows us two possibilities. One where the Planning Commission is totally like a legislative side, writing the rules or advising, um, recommending. Rules to the select board to actually approve. Um, and the DRB handles all the judicial aspect of things, site plans, subdivisions, conditional uses, variances, appeals. Um, but it could be divided a different way, where the DRB has, uh, a few less of those and the Planning Commission acquires abilities to, um. To review and make decisions on site plans, subdivisions. And then wrapping up here, um. Our charter says that the Planning Commission is made of seven members. Once again, if the Vermont Legislature was to approve, uh, you know, a different number, it could, it could potentially be anything, I guess, if, if they approved it, but. Um, already in, in statute, there's already the precedent that allows the Planning Commission to have, to be made up of three to nine voting members. And, um, our charter says the terms are four years. And then also in statute, but our, our, um. Is the, um. The wording that, that planning commissioners can either be put in place by appointment by the select board or voted in by the townspeople. Which, you know, would happen at towns meeting when they make the other elections for officers. So I don't know if anybody caught anything else, um. But whether or not you did. I felt like, I think I gave a good rundown there, just pretty much reiterated, reiterated my memo, and if you all read it in advance, then that was excessive, but, um. Did any of those catch any of your eyes or, you know, is something that, that we should talk about and potentially recommend a change to?
The only thing that was meaningful to me was the four-year term.
Mm-hmm.
It's quite long, four years. It's a big commitment and I think a lot of people, when they sign up for something, might see that and think. Four years. I don't know, I did. You know, not that you can't resign, you're not, you know, indentured or anything like that, but, you know, I don't know, it might be food for thought, but. A smaller term like. Or having terms of different lengths. I don't know if that's allowed or something, but that, maybe that might encourage people. I don't know.
It's a funny number when you think that you can only serve nine years as well.
Does not add up, does it? No.
But other, other boards and committees actually do have staggered, I mean, the Planning Commission has staggered terms as, as well, but. There are some where I think there's like three-year terms and two-year terms.
I'm not sure. I guess the thought that occurred to me was. Is there a large benefit to having members serve longer? Is continuity important? Amongst the board or? Is having someone serve for two years as advantageous as having someone serve for four, for example? I don't know how, I haven't been on long enough to know whether continuity is important.
I, I would, I would say if there is some psychological, you know, an anecdote is that some, a property manager friend who I have said that they switched from, uh, one-year leases to monthly. And they actually found their experience that people stay longer. For that reason, cause maybe, or, or a slightly modified version of that reason, because when, when a year comes up. After, after the first year, they're like, oh wow, do I wanna sign on for a whole nother year?
Yeah.
I'm, you know, and then so they think, maybe I'd be better off somewhere else, but if it's just little bite-sized increments, then it's like.
Easy to keep going.
Easy to keep going, yeah. Um. We frequently have vacancies and other boards and committees do as well. I feel like if we, if we didn't, if there was such demand to be in, then it'd be good to have shorter terms. Cause it'd be like, let's, let's cycle some new people in or at least build things to, to, to make that. I mean, still, any time a term's over, people apply and then the select board. Makes decisions. I noticed that it seems like they like, um, people who have experience to keep on going as long, as long as they're willing. Which, you know, something to be said for having that experience, um, cause it takes some time to get familiar with a new role.
I don't know how long that four-year term has been in the charter. My guess is it's been a long time and it may have been around when the Planning Commission actually did site plan and subdivision review. And in that situation, I can see where longer terms. Could maybe be useful.
Yeah, the memory.
Just, yeah, to have, to have that memory kind of. But I, I can't think of a reason at this point where. It has to be four years. Where there, there's a benefit to four years.
Yeah.
I like to have continuity, but that's.
Taj, Dan, does this anything calling to? Regarding the charter?
I think the four years is fine myself, but that's just because you can't always resign, but you know, that's just a thought about that one.
My question was about, I think, I don't have it in front of me, but the second I, so on the, talking about the commission taking on more roles that the DRB has currently. And I have any concern about the the powers, but specifically workload-wise, is it something where planning commission would need to, I mean, increase, increase how often we meet or or be taking on, I, I don't know. workload issue would happen?
Can I answer?
Yeah, please.
That's a, that's a good question. And, yeah, I think, so the legislature, I don't remember when it was when they enacted development review boards. It may have been around 2003. But what they were finding is that planning commissions didn't have enough time to actually get to the long-term planning. And so they came up with the development review board structure where you put the development review with one board and the planners, the planning commission could do that long-term planning. So, so, yeah, I think the workload would increase. I don't think right now that we're seeing, you know, a huge you know, amount of development review, but but primarily it's site plan, whatever goes to the development review board is mostly site plan review. So, you know, there would be meetings where, yeah, you're not going to get to the planning. So it would definitely increase the workload. And then I think another, a couple of other things to think about that, if we went back to the planning commission zoning board of adjustment, is that right now we do on the record review and I'm not sure if that's an option, if you have the, and on the record review actually means that if something gets appealed, it's, you know, you're, you're, you're just looking at, what do they call it? They're looking at, they're not taking the case from the start. So we have very documented procedures that basically means if there's an appeal filed, it's going to have a quicker review because you're not starting the whole process over. They're just looking at the question of law or, you know, interpretation. That's something that the development review board did. And so I don't know if you can have that in the zoning board of adjustment, planning commission. I don't know if you can do on the record review. We could look into that if you felt strongly about the planning commission taking back, suggesting the planning commission take back some of those review.
Thanks. I was on the, doesn't necessarily have much relation to the charter in some ways, but I, I feel like I just have to mention, I was on the RTM steering committee a year or two ago and my kind of big issue that I was promoting, which, which didn't go anywhere. I mean, some people liked it, but it would have been too much of a shakeup maybe, and some felt that it was outside of our purview, was that the whole powers of the people part and the petition ability requiring, not just for this, but for ordinances as well. It requires a petition to have ten percent of the voters of the town's signatures. And not that we should do things the way other states do, but for example, Massachusetts, for people to do that, it only takes ten, not percent, but ten signatures. So the, you know.
The bar is quite high.
So the, yeah, the bar is quite high here and you know, Vermont government, town government seems to give a lot more power to the select board than like Massachusetts does. They also have legislative powers in Vermont, whereas town meeting holds all the legislative powers in Massachusetts. And select board is just executive. But, you know, maybe just more practically to us with this one power of the townspeople petitioning to put to a vote of the town changing something with the town plan or land use and development rights. I wonder if that would potentially engage people more? If they felt like, you know, if that number was a percent was drastically lowered according to precedent of nearby, of adjacent states, if that would actually put it within the realm of, you know, because no one's ever done that. And I don't think anyone's ever done the ordinance either in Brattleboro because of needing about a thousand signatures.
It's a big number.
Yeah, so even, yeah, so I, I don't know the answer to it, but I wonder if if it was more, the barrier was lower and it's more accessible if if people would, would engage more with the land use rights and get creative and make proposals and, and even maybe get on the planning commission. Yes, Steve, you have fun.
Yeah, just for for context, I wanted to mention that Massachusetts had, I don't know if it was 2021 or in the last five years or so, they made the barrier to appealing and revising a zoning ordinance question substantially steeper if it was going to downzone. So you now need, I think, a super majority of two-thirds or maybe even three-quarters.
Of.
And and that is also a good question. I think it's just of the administrative, or not the, the, I think it's of the board. Select board, city council, what have you in that jurisdiction, but I'll need to look back into that.
There'll probably be town meeting.
But whoever it is that's reviewing that, what's stuck in my head is that it was, I think it was being nicknamed like the the Baker veto or something where it was specifically meant to be a check on sort of NIMBY type reactions to zoning reform to support their sort of, I think it's 40B, transit-oriented development type law. And and it, I think, has been seen as a pretty effective tool at being a sort of a ratchet on actually being able to downzone a community after it's had enough of it and go through the proper process. So if that's sort of a simulation were involved, I think that the potential for for negative outcomes from changing the formula here would be lessened, but just letting it rip as such might be a particularly unproductive type of engagement.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, potentially. Anyway, I just want to express that, you know, I don't think it's necessarily anything we can figure out right here and feel confident about, but. Okay, if there's nothing with the charter, then that means I don't think we need to choose a representative for the November meeting. And perhaps I'll respond to the email and say that. Moving on to the agenda item about the Better Connections Grant.
So I put in the materials some background information about the grant for new members and those that might need, needed new refresh, or some refreshing. We have a grant. We're going to do a corridor plan for Canal Street and Bridge Street from exit one to Hinstill Bridge. Looking at how do we make the street safer for all users? Yeah, pretty excited about it. And also consider the impact of maybe some infill development in places like, you know, what is infill housing on the Winston Party canvas mean for traffic, you know, and, and, you know, the Cal Pond, if those could be redeveloped, so we can look at some infill housing. Look at streetscape solutions and also some stormwater management as well. So it is a planning study. I put a draft RFP that I've been working on and I've sent to my state partners, which is Vtrans and the Agency of Commerce and Community Development to get their feedback. The project is getting a late start, that's in part due to Vtrans, their summer got a little topsy-turvy with all the flooding this summer and they've been understaffed as well. So we actually don't even have the grant agreement. I'm expecting, expecting that in the next two weeks, but want to be ready to go with the RFP. And so I think the questions for the planning commission that I have for you, I mean, I'm happy to take feedback on the RFP, but also kind of understand what role the planning commission would like to take in this project. As set up in the RFP, you know, there'll be a community process. I plan to have a advisory committee and a steering committee, so the steering committee is kind of the smaller that might help with some of the review, providing a little guidance that way, and then a larger advisory committee that's made up of stakeholders within the corridor and within the community to kind of bounce ideas off of, you know, give some direction as well to the consultants. In the past, when we've done studies, both the Housing Action Plan and the Walk Bike Plan, we've had planning commission representatives, you know, on those committees, so happy to entertain that. But I also don't know if it's something the planning commission really wants to engage in and have updates at your meetings, at your monthly meetings. I think staff and these committees will really be helping with the public outreach, whether it's just ideas, people to be contacting, maybe some help as time permits for pulling together groups of people that we can be talking to. Yeah, and we're looking, this project, I mean, I'm hoping to get it started later this fall and it'll probably go through the end of 2024, so. But again, I have to go out for consultants, so also being part on their time schedule.
Okay, thank you. If there's any questions or clarifications first, maybe that would be good before launching into any sort of direction or ideas. All right, but feel free to ask them if, if you can come up with them later. But yeah, commissioners, what are your thoughts?
Sue, if there were representatives on the subcommittee or the committee, would it be similar to the bike ped one, where there, I think we had, was it three or two?
We had up to, we could have up to three, because if you get four, then it's core movement. So, yeah, we've had up to.
I can think of at least one commissioner who's absent, who I, I would guess would be interested in it. Could you follow up with the two absent commissioners and maybe the soon-to-be commissioner? I was a little surprised to see, just not that I have much experience looking at these sorts of projects and things, but maybe just based off the last few that we've done, that for, what was it called in the RFP, the selection committee? They'll be selecting the, you know, choosing the consultant or firm to to do this project. And, geez, what did I write? Maybe I didn't write it down. It was made up of four, oh, yeah, so representatives from the town of Brattleboro, such as yourself, maybe, and from the Wyndham Regional Commission. I wouldn't surprise by those two things. But then two representatives as well from two state agencies. And I thought if, if, you know, two or three groups are, you know, have, if their, if their vote power is larger than than the vote power of representatives of of Brattleboro, I wonder if they might make choices that are, you know, that are just kind of too general and broad or aren't tailored as well for for Brattleboro's preferences.
Yeah, so I'm not stuck on four. I think I used their kind of base language and put that in there. You know, if we wanted to have, I don't want it to be too big. But, you know, if we wanted to have a fifth person, we wanted to have somebody from the planning commission represented. The state agencies are, I don't even know that there'd be two, maybe it should be up to two. But Vtrans and Agency of Commerce and Community Development really want to be partners in this project. And so they kind of want to be hands-on at at all levels, so.
That's good.
I took their kind of template language. It's funny, because I think sometimes state agencies won't, you know, they want to be involved, but they're not necessarily going to rank them. So having, you know, having another, yeah, like I said, I'm not wedded at four, if somebody felt really strongly.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it doesn't seem to you in your, you know, experience that and I haven't heard anything in line with this, but that they're going to be, you know, trying to really force some just cookie cutter
No, I don't think so.
sort of thing down to us, yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay. I think at a previous commission meeting, one of the commissioners, and I thought there was a good point to this, that the corridor be extended beyond the exit.
Yep.
I think to the exit one industrial park or farther. I mean, it certainly doesn't make sense to just, I don't think, to just stop it at the interstate, because who's walking or bicycling to the bridge?
Yeah.
And then turning around.
So I had a conversation, we had to have a pre-application meeting, you were in that as well. We, we talked a little bit about that and they were not, they didn't want to see it pass kind of the more compact developed area. However, they acknowledged that, you know, that that could be discussed as part of it, but they really wanted, were, wanted to keep the study area more focused.
Okay, so formally it doesn't.
And I think, you know, the state is, right, and the state is going to be coming through with a paving project, so I think we can advocate for that regardless bike lanes or wider lane, I mean, similar to what they just did on Route nine and Route thirty. So.
Yeah, I think to that point, you just wouldn't want to see like a really good idea, not extend the extra like three hundred feet.
Yeah.
Like, just have that, like, be acknowledged in whatever study happens, like, you know, because.
Yeah, and one could say, oh, to Algiers two, however, that's like another mile and that's not our town. They're great, but and then the industrial park is just the last bit in Brattleboro, but that's, you know, a significant development and where people go, so.
That, that. Well, if I, if I could, if I could push back a little bit on that, I, I think one of the, besides the extension length, there's that critical junction at the underpass of ninety-one that I was really, you know, hoping could be included besides the industrial park extension. But, you know, I guess that's a, it's a, something that can be noted and so forth. I'm sure it's under a different jurisdiction for the, you know, interstate highway and all that, so it might complicate things, but that was an extra reason because of the traffic hazards.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't complicate it that it's, it's under, I mean, it's all state highway and it's state highway, I think I'm talking Burger King, actually, so.
Okay, so then what's the, what's the, so then why not extend it to the industrial park?
I, I am trying to recall a conversation from back in January of this year. I just know they didn't, they were not favorable to that. They said, you know, yeah, it's going to kind of be, can be discussed, but in terms of the study area, they, that was not, you know.
Well, so.
Do you have anything to add? I can't really remember what the.
Yeah, I don't particularly recall. I know we were heavily lobbying for what we thought would maybe be also a, a hard sell, which was on the opposite end of the corridor with Bridge Street, so I think we were less focused on trying to get an extension on the opposite end.
Oh, it ends that name at the intersection?
No, it, it, they didn't seem concerned at all about having Bridge Street in there. I think both of us were thinking we were going to have to spin the story there to to get them to see it our way, but they were totally fine with it. But, yeah, I don't remember anything about the specifics of why they didn't want to see it slightly further. May well have to do with sidewalks, but I don't know that that even is the case all the way past Fairview that we would still have sidewalks.
I feel like there was something where maybe because it was state highway and they weren't going to do sidewalks and they realized a paving project was going to come through and they were open to bike lane, you know, like, what treatment would be down there is probably going to be bike lanes and so, you know, they, they just advised us to kind of cut it off at the bridge, but I'm sure that we can, I, you know, I might be able to write it in the RFP to kind of slot that area in, but it's not where the majority of the resources are going to go, particularly if you look at, you know, we're going to be getting conceptual designs and that kind of thing.
No, granted, but I'm sure you understand what I'm saying, right? The, the traffic hazards underneath the overpass there are, you know, sort of a, that's what, and the, the traffic being fed to Canal Street is kind of the, I would say, it's assumed as part of the study, I guess, but you know, including it, I, I don't know, and there are folks who, who walk to the industrial park, you know.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it just seems kind of silly not to, but I don't know, suppose if it's not a priority, that's, yeah. Neither here nor there.
Well, I can figure out a way to kind of write it in. I mean, maybe that not focusing on for the grant was a good thing, but, you know, in the RFP, we'll call it out as an area.
Well, if I may ask, I mean, then my next question would be, where's the actual boundary? Is it at the ramp of I ninety-one or is it at the, the, the underpass? Is it at the ramp of I-91 or is it at the, the, the underpass border, or you know what I mean? Like, where do you draw that line? Is it at the, you know, the, the parking lot at, you know, where is it, right? Did you already come up with that, or?
It was the, well, the map shows, what do we have it at?
It's kind of just between the two.
Just the highway?
Ways, yeah, but it's.
Yeah, I mean, it's not that specific.
It wasn't meant to be authoritative.
Okay, well, if you can do it to the industrial park, that would be great, but I'm just gonna wishful thinking there.
Well, I agree with that, too. And probably if there's a commissioner who feels that way on the steering committee, that might, that might go some distance in making that more of a reality. Looking at you, Dan.
Yeah, I mean, I really, you know, it, it's a, it's a area that I'm pretty familiar with, so, I mean, that, and down Canal Street as well, I mean, you know, uh, I, yeah, I think I could get a few folks to get some interest as well in the public.
So, Dan, what are your.
Interesting area.
Well, what are, what are your concerns and what can it, like, so I know that there are people walking there, I know that there are people that bike there. What other concerns, i- is it the, you know, how it comes off? You know, is it the exit ramps, the entrance ramps, is it just so much going on there, like, what?
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I think, or I, you know, I, I presume that that is one of the few areas of development that's potent, like, out beyond I-91. You know, the, I don't know what the plans are really at the industrial park and so forth, but it just seems kind of this, it would be an interesting area to study. There's also rescue there, not to bring up a, you know, but there's, there's a few nodes that are right on the edge of I-91 that send traffic that direction as well, you know, toward I-91, so. Yeah, I don't know, it just, it just seems, I, I mean, I get it that, that there's a lot of more interest, like, near the height, the, near the, well, the high school and the hospital and, you know, but, yeah, I don't know, I just don't, I don't, I, I guess I'm, I'm curious why not instead of why to?
Actually.
Is, will, will the consultant on this who helps prepare the study, will they help the group figure out what lenses to look at these issues through, for example, gender or things like, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't know that I would necessarily be on the committee or not, but I would really love to see it looked at through a gender lens as who's using that corridor, and especially who's most vulnerable when they're using that corridor.
You asked in the memo, Sue, about potential stakeholders, and I saw, mentioned things like certainly the Winston Proudie campus up the hill from the road, and and then other things were mentioned, like the high school and the industrial park and the hospital and Market Thirty-two and Groundworks. I don't know if that was written down as, I mean, those are good stakeholders as well. And of course, it's going to be all open public meetings, so we're not going to list individual residents' names as potential stakeholders, because there's hundreds or thousands of them, but there will be, you know, open meetings for that. So those are what comes to mind for stakeholders, those big, big developments plus groundwork along, and institutions along the road there. For the creative public outreach, I saw in the materials that like guided or walking tours and, you know, bus info rides would be part of it, potentially bicycling, too, I think would be a good one.
I've done that. It's a good one.
Yeah, and I could see.
I did that for the walk bike plan, and actually, yeah, it could be good to get B-CAD and do like a bike ride.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that was really illuminating.
Sounds terrifying.
It, I, it was the most, the scariest part of town that I wrote in, because there's the on-street parking, there's lots of intersections, and so it was just this constant, like.
Yeah.
Looking around. And I read, I, I biked, we took the e-bikes out on Western Ave, we took them to West Brattleboro Village, and there's some pinch points there. And downtown.
Yeah, and certainly if, if, if that was something open as a public event and, you know, a varied level of bicyclists came, you know, the consultants or whoever's organizing would have to do a pretty good job to keep things, you know, under control or safe or, but even just the walking tour along Canal Street, it might, it might be one of those issues where it's hard to hear. Some of the people need to yell or step off the road, you know, on a side street for a little bit every so often to speak. But those are details to be figured out later. I thought I had, since the green street principles will be taken into account, and we think so much about stormwater lately, is in recent years, is because I'm thinking in Vermont or near, in the region, have municipalities been doing or stormwater detention basins off roads as an alternative to the storm drains? Like, if there's a vacant area off the side of the road, and since roads slope that way, a curb cut or something or culvert could happen and just take all the water that's rushing down the road and just put in a big man-made pond?
I think Bio-Swales at least came up, which I know is different, but that sort of thing did come up in the pre-application discussion. So to the extent that it's something that's subjectorily allowable or within our means to, to actually affect, I don't see why not.
Right, yeah, but it's a matter of property ownership.
I mean, it's also, well, it's, yeah, I mean, it's retrofitting stormwater detention isn't very easy to, for,
Right.
For municipal system isn't easy to do, and it's, and it's consumptive.
Right.
So is that the highest best use of that land?
Right.
As opposed to allowing it to be developed and having maybe underground recharge, so, you know, I think that for years, the stormwater management was to let it run off the site and into the municipal system. Like, you know, now it's more of let's keep it on the site and deal with it on site, so. So could you retrofit with the detention? Potentially.
Okay.
There's certainly places, like I can think of, is it Quails Hill? I don't know if they actually have a, built it, but their road was going to be handled with a detention basin. Sherwood Circle has some detention basins for their roads and stuff.
Yeah, the only thought I have is that I, I think a couple commissioners might be interested on being on the steering committee, but I'm not. A couple of them are absent, and I don't know about the folks here. Does anyone need to know more about what the steering committee would entail, or?
I would have to know.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, that's something I'll be shaping up over the next month, too, so we can bring that back and.
Okay.
I mean, I probably will know it best once we have a consultant on board, to be honest, but.
Okay.
I'll work on that, because I, I need to get other community partners.
Is there anything else for this one? Dan or Todd? Okay. Great, we're kind of catching up, but we do have very little time actually for this last one. I'll give a little, well, there's plenty of background material provided by staff in the folder on this one. And you'll see, I think only Dan of the four commissioners here, well, and myself, were present the last time the planning commission talked about historic aspects and doesn't, you know, it's not a very simple cut and dry topic, it doesn't seem, not that all of our other ones are either, but I remember we just didn't move too much on it, it seems, there was either other priorities or it was kind of a complex topic. And a lot of just maybe subjective values go into it, so it's, it's hard to maybe find the facts. But the development, the design review committee, which is a committee that's advisory to the, the development review board and in Brattleboro, they are, they review certain, well, development in the historic resource overlay district, and they make, not quite decisions, but they make recommendations on that to the DRB. And I think almost always the DRB goes along with what they recommend. And they have requested to be at our November meeting to present a proposal about demolition delay and to have not necessarily a written-up proposal, but just a discussion about forming a historic preservation committee, which I believe is a requirement if a municipality goes down the path of getting certified local government status, which would be an ordinance that needs to be passed by the select board to get the ball, the ball rolling. And it comes with all sorts of benefits and, and funding and assistance for the, for historic preservation in the town. So staff provided a bunch of info, but do you, Steve, do you want to, we don't have much time, do you want to? I mean, this is mostly in preparation and to get the bus up to speed for November's meeting.
Yep.
So you could summarize it, or we could take questions, or you could highlight any parts you felt were most important? I don't see hands up from the commissioners, so you want to say a minute or two?
Yeah, I think maybe anticipating that hopefully folks have either had the time to check out the, the memo or, or may be able to do that before our next meeting. I can just maybe skip down to the last two pages where there's a few things that might need to bear looking into or potentially making amendments to. It's the first portion of it, it's mostly just explaining background. So, yeah, as, as you mentioned, there's the opportunity to establish a, I actually to correct myself, you, you mentioned the historic commission potentially being established and having that be a prerequisite for being able to have a CLG. In, in a similar vein, there's also, there is a difference in state statute between design review districts and local historic districts. And in a way, it seems like our current HRO sort of straddles the two, but I think technically we've set it up as a design review district. And so, yeah, that, that's one of the things that's worth considering is we have multiple districts within the overlay. So, you know, downtown, Clark Canal, Porton Homestead, the West Brattleboro District. Does it make sense to have all of them be treated in that way? Or should some of them be historic districts rather than designed districts? And, you know, what, what should the discussion and the balancing of values be there? And then in terms of just what we have currently in districts, should we add more? Certainly heard some interest from different groups in the community for that. Do we perhaps have too much? Who's to say? Probably not going to be the popular take, and I'm not suggesting that we have too much, but that's sort of the opposite pole there, or are, are some things in that are, that shouldn't be in, are some things out that shouldn't be out? So adjustments to the boundary itself. And then the more targeted things that have come up, we'll hear about demolition delay, and that has been discussed previously. And I think, you know, staff would have some feedback if, if that were something that was being taken up, as something that was going to be perhaps included. But there have been suggestions to look into specific dimensional standards for the HRO itself based on the, the historic context or perhaps the, the listing of each property. And then there have been suggestions to make the parting standards specific or, or more lax in the historic districts so that we don't see demolitions precipitated by the fact that we're requiring that. But then the, the most probably important, but possibly very easy fix is something that we've seen from the State Architecture Historian and had confirmed a few times, most recently in a conversation from 2021 that I've included in the folder, is that the way that we connect the NRHP, National Register of Historic Places, listing directly to being in the historic resource overlay is sort of a, it, to, in their view, it's not good practice, and I don't think we would be able to successfully get a CLG. Like, they've pretty much telegraphed that, that we would have to change that, but otherwise are probably fine in the way that we are, are a responsible town government in, in terms of land use. So it, it's possible that all that would take is just some minor textual change to make it clear that that's not a direct, as soon as you do this, you suddenly are subject to this level of regulation. So that's something that we can look into and try to get more specifics from the state on. What would you consider to be resolving this issue and, and that one? Insofar as we actually have the CLG thing in a town, in the town plan as a goal, that would seem to be the only really required change. The other things are just stuff that's come up that might be of interest.
I think we shouldn't do too much more except any clarifying questions right now at this meeting, because we don't have too much time to do much else. However, if, yeah, I think it'll just be good to relook at this if need be, maybe even include it in the folder again for next month. So that way the, the DRC members can, if they get directed or, you know, know about our, our link on their own, they can get caught up to speed as well with how, what we've discussed and how we've discussed it in the materials we've been presented with. Yeah, certainly have, you know, some already half-preformed preferences and, and directions I'm, I'm feeling with these, but I'll save that for later.
Do feel free, you or anyone on the commission or even members of the public, to, to reach out and let me know if there's anything that seems like it's missing from this list of things that have come up before or, or might be worth considering, because this certainly isn't an exhaustive.
Well, there's the current, really small demolition section in our regs, and so, you know, an option could be that that could be modified and clarified or removed or, you know, gets supplanted by potential demolition delay, but we already have a little something there, whether it's adequate or too much is, is another issue. Dan or Todd? Do we still have that member of the public here, John? Okay, because not that I'm necessarily asking you about this agenda item unless you have anything to add, but the public comment period is next, if you had anything not related to an agenda item to say.
Not at this time, thanks.
Okay, yeah, thanks, thanks for attending. We could wrap up early.
It's okay with me.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Need a motion.
Well, we do have the ten minutes, though, if people want to just ask some freewheeling questions or anything about the HRO and the materials. But I'm feeling tired myself, and ten minutes won't get us very far, and there's meetings in the future, so. Having completed all of our business, according to my interpretation, I call this meeting adjourned. That's it, thanks everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Great evening night.
All right.